Hi, everyone. Thanks for joining. We'll get started at seven. So while you're waiting, we just can kind of watch through the slides that are going through, and then we'll get started in a little while. Hi, everyone. Thanks for joining. We'll get started at seven o'clock. While we're waiting, there are slides running through, just kind of giving some highlights from Good Shepherd. Hi, Cheryl.
Hello, everyone.
Hello. Hi, everyone. Thanks for joining. We're gonna give it a couple more, a couple more minutes. We'll start at seven. While you're waiting, we've got some slides scrolling through for you to check out all of our ministries, as well as some of our numbers. So we'll get started at seven o'clock, and I'll turn it over to Nick at that point. Hi, everyone. Thanks for joining. I know the beeps are starting to slow down. We'll get started at seven o'clock. Just so you know, I don't know if it pops up as you are joining the call, but this call is being recorded so that we can share it after a while on our website. So I just wanted to make those who may not have heard that, or if the message doesn't come up when you are joining, that you are aware this is being recorded. And I see it at seven o'clock. So Nick, are you?
I'm on.
Drew.
Hi, Tammy. Thank you.
Hello.
Welcome, everyone.
I'm mute, and my, we got all kinds of noise bringing in the background here, and I will switch it over to the other side of slides.
Great, thank you. Well, everyone, welcome. Thank you for joining. We've got a a pretty full house here, which is great to see virtually, of course, in our virtual house, all of us here together. So thanks to everyone for joining. Tammy is going to be pulling up our new set of slides here, but you know, we just wanted to make sure we kicked off with a thanks to all of you. I'm Nick Zepnick. I'm on the Pastoral Council here at Good Shepherd. We have quite a few Pastoral Council and Finance Council members around, so we'll ask them to raise their hands here after a while. So get ready for that team, but we have some great content to share tonight. And then, of course, we're very excited to hear questions and affirmations and feedback that you may have. So we'll kind of kick it off, maybe. Tammy, are you able to share that second slide? Or should I, or maybe Deacon Sandy could kick us off in prayer while you're pulling that up?
Why do we wait for the slide, Nick? Because it kind of puts us in the right queue.
That's right. I'm on board with staying on track.
Sorry, I had, with all the screens up, I was just trying to get to the right, the right spot.
The beeps are, the ding, the chimes are still happening, so folks are still joining us, which is great.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get. There we go. I should. Yeah. You can see the hands? Yes?
Yes.
Bingo.
They appear to be praying hands, right on cue. So Deacon Sandy, would you open us in prayer?
I would be honored, and it's my privilege, and how appropriate that the first thing we do as a gathering of leadership and of our wonderful parishioners, that we begin in prayer. So we do that in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Almighty, ever-living, ever-loving God, we give you thanks for every mind and heart that is present here this evening. We thank you, God. You have given us talents, abilities, and desires, hopefully, to do your will. As a result, we start this Zoom gathering with visions, hints, and thoughts about what is right to do. However, only you, God, see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, the purpose of every project and season, every life, every parish plan. With you, God, nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps with your guidance can be used for good. And so, God of wisdom and strength, strengthen our confidence in ourselves, for we are good because you made us. Set us free from doubt in order to work together for your glory. May our thoughts, our words, our actions, and this prayer be pleasing in your sight. We ask all of this to Christ our Lord, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Wow, what an awesome prayer, Deacon Sandy. Thank you for that.
Well, thank God for that.
Well, yes, of course, and, and thank God also for all of you here attending virtually, soldiering through the technology hiccups that often come in these Zoom meetings. And so, thanks, everyone, for taking the time and committing to our parish in this way by attending. We can kind of take a look here at the agenda. I alluded to it before. In a moment, I'll turn it over to Deacon Sandy for the state of the parish. And then there'll be some updates from Pastoral Council and the Commissions. I'll be doing those. And then we have a Finance Council update. Tim Nolan is on for that. And then the bulk of our time is Q and A. So we hope that you've brought those questions and that you're ready to ask them. We're, we're fully staffed up and excited to address those. So maybe Deacon Sandy, if we can pivot to you and, and hear the state of the parish.
Again, my honor, Tammy, you're gonna need to help and assist by switching slides for me, so I can cue you, and that's exactly where we should be. So my fellow parishioners and fellow leaders, we begin a new year and prepare for 2023. Let's take a moment to celebrate some major accomplishments at Good Shepherd this past year. Overall, I think it fair to say that 2022 was a year of outstanding achievement. And if I could be the one to give an award, I would, for Good Shepherd Parish, for outstanding achievement. Let me share with you a very high-level, 30,000-foot view of the state of the parish. Don't worry, there'll be council, commission, and committee reporting following. Nick will do a lot of that, and Tim Nolan will also do Finance Council. So this report is at the high level, and what you're gonna hear after my report is more detailed. So Tammy, if you'd advanced to the next slide. Given two years of COVID challenges and willing participation by parishioners adhering to our COVID guidelines, we closed 2022 much less encumbered by COVID restrictions than we were over the last two years. We need to remember COVID is not over, but we are in a much better place than we've been as we start now this new year. So on to the next slide. For over two years, we have been refining our multi-year goal for more vibrant masses and to attract and involve more youth and more young families. I chose this graphic because look at that gathering of youth, and look at the happy, smiling faces. I see Lisa laughing, I'm laughing. It was a wonderful response by one of these children. So with the guidance of Pastoral Council, we're well underway now in this note, in this goal of vibrant masses and more young families. Also regarding vibrant masses, mass attendance is up. And I think you can all sense that as you attend Mass, you see more children are being dismissed to listen to the Lord. A great sign. The next slide will show you two screens, and that's a one screen, and that's to represent our tech ministry, which has blossomed with more use of technology in the sanctuary, enhancing our liturgies. And by the way, a lot of youth involved now in our tech ministries. The next slide will show you the landing page of our website. And I'm very proud of that very simple but powerful statement that all visitors and any of us parishioners will see. We are committed to the ways of Christ. That sounds simple, but it's profound. So we have with this new website an overhaul of our database, an ability to communicate more efficiently with parishioners, and as the website landing page indicates, we are indeed committed to the ways of Christ. The next slide has us remember that we celebrated this last year the dedicated service of Sister Joanne and Mike Crane as they took their well-deserved retirement. Interestingly, and with God's good grace, both have decided to remain parishioners so that we will get to continue our relationship with them, but in a new way. The next slide will show you the new staff, and it has been completely reconfigured. We added three new staff members, bringing newer insights and new skills to the team. Our staff have shown that they are willing participants to build from within as each staff member, every one, has had their job description adjusted to approach the future more efficiently. The next slide will indicate that we returned to a dedicated parish director focusing on Good Shepherd exclusively. And Tammy, if you in advance, I would say woo-hoo regarding having one parish versus two. In the next slide, we recognize 25 years of our reserve and Esrau New Century Fund investments and income funds to assure the future of our parish. On to the next graphic, we celebrate also a new boiler and heat. I think that deserves another woo-hoo. We move on to the next slide to indicate that we have now begun to receive funds from the Love One Another Campaign. We've done that now over the last year. Each quarter, we get a transfer from the trust account into our budget. And we will continue to receive income for much-needed projects through 2026. So thank you, parishioners who were on this call, and all the many others, several hundred, for your pledges and resulting payments. The next slide will illustrate that we launched a very comprehensive and successful stewardship 2023 communications campaign, recognizing with gratitude our roots, which was our past, our fruits, which is our current state, and our shoots, which is our future. And notice in the upper right-hand corner, you may not yet have noticed it, but this notion of roots, fruits, and shoots, our past, current, and present, is the theme of this entire Parish Town Hall this year. In the upper right, you see that graphic continued. Please advance, Tammy, to the next, and I would indicate that we will be negligent in reviewing our recent past if we did not acknowledge our priest, Father Tom Soriano and Father Peter Drancy. Please go out of your way the next time you see them to show them our appreciation. We go on to the next slide. And last year, we need to acknowledge that we said our final farewells to our longtime assisting priest, Father Richard Hart, and one of our regular Help Our Priests, Father Bob Steffater, who moved on now to their eternal reward. So let's pray together. The P on this slide is me, and the R is you. You're muted, so nobody will hear you, but please, where it says R, please respond. May perpetual light shine upon them. May they rest now in peace. May their souls and the souls of all the faithful departed. The mercy of God rest in everlasting peace, and let all say, amen. We move on now to the next slide. And using the toys collection as an illustration of abundance, overall, I would say, as your parish director, 2022 was a very good year. Challenges, yes, but in spite of challenges, a very good year. Quoting Scripture and quoting Christ himself, he came that we should have life and have it in abundance, and we do it, Good Shepherd. A few very quick comments about the future. So let's turn the page now, Tammy, with a move to the next slide, to 2023. On to the next graphic. We begin the year with great news. After months of uncertainty and thinking, in fact, Hartford House was going to go away because Barb and Ray Price are retired now. They announced their retirement about six years, about six months ago. So we weren't sure what was gonna happen, but we begin the year having had the lease signed, the state certifying the new operators, and the first check in hand. So I know Finance Council is relieved, not just because we have a wonderful ministry continuing, but also we have a continuing flow of finance from that lease income from them. The next slide illustrates the good news, because Father Tom and Father Peter are appointed by the Archbishop. They've been appointed for another year. That's a calendar year, and they both said yes. So they will continue to serve us at Good Shepherd and inspire us. On again to the next slide, you'll see a picture you've already seen, our overall parish organization. And staff remain the same. And the next slide will show you what you may have never seen. It is our org chart on the left. So it's going by pretty fast. You can go back to the recording to see it in more detail, but the next click will blow up or zoom in on the following. Another click will highlight Pastoral Council, and as they do each year, they will transition with three new members in July. And the next click will highlight Finance Council, and they will continue to steward the parish resources. And one more review for the coming year. Love One Another will continue. Next slide, please, to provide needed funding for 2026. And in final summary, next slide, stewardship 2023, gratitude for roots, fruits, and shoots will bear more fruit. And there's one more very important thing to acknowledge. You. There's you. Thank you, one and all. That's it from me. I told you it would go fast and very high level. I now, Tammy will now reset this so that we have what Nick will report on in terms of Pastoral Council and Commission updates. Nick, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Deacon Sandy, and on behalf of the parish, thank you for all of your work. We're very excited to have you back full-time. Aaron Rodgers playing for our team 100%. So anyway. So that's very exciting, and I get the great privilege of sharing on behalf of Pastoral Council, the many great things that God is doing at our parish. So by no means is this all me. I just get to be the one to jump in front of the parade and direct where everything is going. But a quick look at Pastoral Council. You can see all of our folks on here. And can, is anybody on Pastoral Council here? It's a little difficult to scroll through the video, but maybe raise your hand if you are on, or raise your hand virtually, just so folks can see. We'll leave those up for just a couple of seconds. And, and you can kind of see our overall group. We meet monthly. And so, you know, we also have minutes from those meetings available as well. So Tammy, if you want to turn to slide 42, we can kind of talk with some of those goals of Pastoral Council, right? So our goal over the last, oh, and actually, yeah, that's, that's fine. I'll just take a quick, quick note on Pastoral Council's goals for this past year. We met as a group and talked a lot about kind of our parish, and as we've kind of talked about a few times now, we've really tried to emphasize vibrancy of the Mass and engagement with our young families. And those are two focus areas. Of course, they're not our only focuses, but I do think it's important for us to understand what we're really good at, and those are two things. And then try to do them even better. And so that's kind of the approach we're taking. If we look at our council overall, each person's aligned with a commission, and we'll go through some of those here. And so we have a nice overview of the church and our activities represented at each of our meetings. So thanks, thanks, Tammy. I got ahead of myself. If you want to flip me to the next slide, back to Christian Formation. So let's start with Christian Formation. Of course, what do we all do here? One of the most important things we do is spread the good news and form disciples, right? So Christian Formation has a very important job as a commission. And on the left, you'll see a picture of our children, the Listen to the Lord time. Deacon Sandy brought it up once before, but I think it's just so important for us to keep remembering how great of a ministry that is. And, and as a tangible example, you may have heard the Zepnick children crying less in church because of these awesome mass bags, which are now at all of the doors and have great coloring books and rosaries and things like that, which, which we just absolutely love. And I've seen used by a great number of young families. So thanks to Christian Formation for that. You want to take us to the next slide? So what else is happening in Christian Formation? We have, of course, generations of faith, a really great ministry that is that is continuing to grow. And I'm really excited to see what the Lord is doing in that ministry. You want to take us to the next slide, Tammy? Of course, our adult formation is critical because without adult formation, we have no, any other kind of formation. We need to have strong adult members of our parish, and we take that seriously. You'll see the spotlight on the screen. But, but interesting this year was this fall retreat, which I thought was really cool. And you'll see some of these great events happening, the book group, the men's group. Really nice to see. And Tammy, if you go to the next slide, it's the most visual sometimes of our ministries, and that is the, the work camp, which remains very strong and is honestly a huge strength of our parish. It cuts across all demographics and really shows kind of the, what Good Shepherd is all about, helping our community. Okay, let's go to the next slide. Let's go to Human Concerns because there is a lot of, and I, I mean, I have like a million notes. Thanks to all the, all the different commissions for putting together these notes with us. There's just honestly, there's so much going on, but we really want to keep this as a town hall, and so we're clicking through some of these. Of course, we have people that can plug you in if any of these sound interesting. We can get you involved, get you with the right team so that you can contribute your time and talents as well. Human Concerns, of course, we have a lot, really a lot going on. I think the biggest things that we a lot of times see are, you know, like our St. Ben's ministry, where we're preparing food, repairs of the breach. You know, just a lot of really great engagement with the Milwaukee community, which of course is what Good Shepherd is known for. Next slide, Tammy. You know, there was a really great expansion of this ministry last year with a close relationship with St. Martin de Por. And, and some of the, some of the parishioners who went there are really doing great things to, you know, the iron sharpens iron, right? And so they're alongside other believers and, and really expanding our community by engaging with that other parish. And of course, you can see on the right that this goes both ways. We invited their parishioners to us. We went to them. It's really great to see both, both sides of that. And then maybe let's go to the next slide, Tammy. And you can see some of our Ea Korea ministry happening here with Human Concerns. You know, it's interesting. There's a lot last year happening in, it honestly, in El Salvador, and, and you see some of the challenges that folks there are facing. And our Human Concerns Commission really took it upon themselves to engage with our political leaders to try to influence and help and help our, our twin parish there. So really great to see a global impact of the people at Good Shepherd and all of the excellent, excellent ministry happening in Human Concerns. So let's, the one thing I do, I do, before we flip to that, I do think it's really awesome. As you'll see from Human Concerns, one thing they're thinking about doing this year is sharing the parishioners' names, the kids' names, who might be going on work camp, and so I'd ask that you pray for those kids and, and and the adults that go with them. It's a great way you can be involved without actually hauling dirt, if that's not your thing. Okay, pastoral care. Honestly, pastoral care was really impacted by the pandemic. It's hard to be physically present with someone in their time of need in the midst of COVID, but we're now really seeing a pickup. I think they made it through COVID remarkably, continued to do great things. But now we're starting to see some of those pastoral care activities we're all used to seeing as well. Um, but now we're starting to see some of those um pastoral care activities we're all used to seeing as well. Last year, of course, uh Christmas cards went out to everyone. We're now starting to do one-on-one visits. Which will be, which will be really great to see again um happening. Okay, you want to flip us to the next slide? Let's see, oh, great, great conversation happening over there in the chat. Love to see that, too. Um, feel free to open up that chat. There's some great other, our other leadership is adding things as we're going here. It's a great way to. Leverage this electronic media. Prayer and worship. The vibrancy of the mass is one of the two focus areas Nick talked about before. I am just absolutely thrilled to see some of the things that are happening, right? You can see the physical changes to our space. Um, you could see additional uses of technology. Um, I think in a respectful way, which is, which is really great to see. Brian Ramsey's been doing an awesome job um with our digital media and keeping parishioners engaged and involved. So we're really ha- happy to see uh some of that work as well. So. Let's take a look here at at some of the um. If we flip to the next side, what stewardship has happening? So I mentioned Brian just before. There he is with the glasses poking over. He he was hired to help. Engage with our parishioners and help all of us, all of us understand the needs of the parish. And and is really engaged with stewardship in an awesome way. You'll see again the the roots, fruits and shoots. I made it through that. I'm quite happy about that. And you'll see that reiterated everywhere and how it really comes from a foundation of how grateful we are. For the things that are happening in our church and and the gifts that, of course, God gave us. When we take a look at some of the, some of the things that stewardship's looking to do, you'll see, I think, more hospitality. Which will be great to see again as we continue to transition back to the, the new, the normal. Good Shepherd, all of us have have come to love. I think, you know, I think that's kind of where I want to leave it. Before I pivot off and hand it over to Tim for the finance council update, I just wanted to. Pause as I was talking there, I was reflecting on my first of these meetings, uh town hall meetings. So I just want to extend a welcome to anybody who's this, where this is your first meeting. So if you're new to Good Shepherd, welcome. Um, I'd love to talk with you, any of our, our team would love to talk with you, but I just didn't want to transition before we said that. Tim, do you want to take us through the finance council update?
Hopefully I unmuted myself correctly and uh you can hear me now, so that'll be great. And uh, yes, I appreciate the opportunity and thank you so much. That's, that's really, uh, I am entirely grateful. Theme uh to be a part of this and to talk to all of you and obviously I'm open to questions and some of them we'll get to a little bit later on. Uh, many of you know me, uh. Good and bad, I might stand up in front of church and talk to you. Uh, so p- please feel free to, you know, approach me and say hello. Uh, but ask your questions. That's the reason that the finance council exists. And uh obviously there's a lot that we need to be a pay attention to as we go through. So. Uh, similar to the process that uh Nick had followed through, we want you to know who makes up our uh finance council. And so you see that on the screen now. Uh, I, at the moment, take that lead position to uh lead us on. After many years from Greg Goss of being uh our chairperson and uh his uh departure takes. The need for new people and hence I said, well, let's give it a whirl. We'll see how it goes, goes. So. Uh, many of you have met or at least been introduced to Marge Beck, our uh latest director of administrative services. And she's done a wonderful job of being part of our team and getting on board. And you'll see from there, uh, you know, Nick represents the pastoral council as uh, uh, as a member. We have our trustees, Ron and Dan, that are part of this. Sandy, of course, sits in on this as part of that. And Jane joins us as a parish, parish representative, a member at large that. Uh, represents the whole community as part, and truthfully, I do too, because I have no other role uh within the parish. But the the two of us represent the parish at large on the finance side of things. And so uh certainly if you have questions, those that you see before you are the ones to approach. And or ask questions of as we move forward. So. Uh, if we can move forward, we uh kind of work into our announcements. Sandy kind of stole part of our thunder and that's okay, that's great. Uh, some of the things he talked about are the things that we want to talk about as well. I want to start with uh the thank you uh to the roots of our parish. Uh, those that had the um ideas to set aside what we call our Eschweiler New Century Fund. Uh, that is, that are funds that we. Have contributed to over the years that help provide to Good Shepherd for various reasons. Uh, but to make sure that we're established and fruitful for the future to go along with that. Uh, the good news, our fund currently sits at, well, this is end of December. Um, sits at six hundred and eleven thousand and at some change dollars. So over the many years since this fund was established. Uh, not only you and many others have given and chosen to provide to that fund. And those funds are used in order to help to make sure that Good Shepherd continues for many, many, many years into the future to go along with that. Uh, this fund itself does establish or provide the ability to help sometimes balance the budget. To help insert into funds in other areas where we might need assistance. Uh, but the growth of this and the continued endowments to this fund is part of what will make a difference for Good Shepherd for. Many, many, as I said before, years to come. It's something that we don't really realize, but not every parish has something like this. And so for our. Those before us, the forefathers and foremothers before us that that have the vision to put aside something like this and those of you that have contributed to it. It really does make a difference for the future. Uh, we do currently, and that's probably important to note, borrow from that fund every year in order to help. Our ministries, our staff, our programs continue for the future. That's something we'd like to try to avoid, but the best way to do it, of course, is to identify ways to draw funds from the current year. And to increase both our pledges as well as our opportunities for income in other ways. In order to go for those types of uh opportunities that will allow us to stop borrowing from the resources from the past. And and work, look forward to the future for tomorrow. Uh, the next slide, oh, I'm sorry. Now, before I do that, love one another and grateful, and you don't have to go back, that's fine. But love one another, uh Sandy, you mentioned that earlier. So love one another. Many of you are familiar with that from our campaign from the past. That's actually an archdiocese in campaign. Uh, as every dollar that we have chosen to contribute to love one another campaign is contributed. We get our opportunity back from those directly to the parish. And the visual on the screen there. Is part of some of the opportunities that we've had the ability to do, enhancing the parish both visually, technologically. Uh, as well as uh uh outreach and financial stability for the future. That will make a certainly a difference as we work through the future. So if you have not had an opportunity to participate in love one another. We encourage you to reach out to us. We can certainly allow or introduce you to the opportunity if you're interested. Uh, if you have participated but choose to donate more, the opportunity is there. If you need to make an adjustment in other ways, certainly that can be uh resolved as well. So please let us know if you have questions, concerns, or otherwise needs related to love one another. We certainly can assist you with that. And the grateful, you know, that's our current theme, not only for the last couple of months as we did our annual campaign. But as Sandy pointed out, it's our two thousand and twenty three stewardship. Our fiscal and our calendar year don't match, but the idea being that when we pledge our dollars in November, December. Start contributing in January, February. It lets us know how people are engaged in our parish for the month and year to come. And that's what we use to budget for the new year. And so if you have not had the opportunity to pledge, we certainly encourage that. So we know a little bit of planning piece. And we can identify needs, wants, desires, what's important for our parish. In order to make sure that those are there. So certainly the opportunity is still there to uh A, increase or B, adjust. Or C, get involved if you have not otherwise participated. Uh, from there, yes, slide. So the, this one here is our two thousand and twenty two. That's actually two thousand and twenty one, two thousand and twenty two fiscal year. Our year ends in June thirtieth each year. These were presented back in September and there was a flyer posted out on the website that does provide this kind of data. So if you can't see it on the screen right now, uh certainly that's okay. You can find it on the website under the finance council. So that we can see where our funds are collected as well as spent. And therefore we have the opportunity to see where those questions may be, if you have anything that you'd like. So I'll leave it simply at that to go along with it. Uh, and from there, um. Uh, the, you know, most significant needs are simply, you know, where do you want to see Good Shepherd for tomorrow? What opportunity do we have to provide for today? And obviously you know that we've got a little bit from yesterday that we're still participating in. So I know those questions that have come up, we'll address those as we move forward to the Q and A.
Excellent. Thank you, Tim. Really great to see. It's, it's, it's unbelievable the work that the finance council does on all of our behalf. Uh, things like the boiler don't just happen. I've come to appreciate. So thanks, Tim. Okay, folks, we are. Going to open it up to Q and A. You have a great number of your pastoral council, finance council. We have Deacon Sandy here. We have staff here. It, we have all sorts of people here um to answer questions. So a couple of housekeeping things first. If you can do the chat, that's great. We'll be monitoring the chat. If you'd like to go live, you can do that as well. Maybe just raise your hand and zoom so that um we can try to, try to keep the audio uh clean. If you do that, make sure you're not muted because otherwise we won't be able to hear you. Again, love, love to hear. I think we have about thirty minutes budgeted for this. I I think that's going to be a lot of time. If we don't get to everyone's questions, we'll be taking them and we'll follow up with you. As your leadership, our pledge is to make sure, not that we answer necessarily all the questions tonight. But that we will follow up with you if we can't. With that, um, if there's anyone who would like to start us off, please feel free to do that. Otherwise, we can flip over to the chat. And I do think there was a question from before that we could start with. Oh, I see Jane Claire's hand up. Well done.
Well, thank you, thank you. A plus on the hand raising scheme. Um, I think that I I don't, I'm sorry if I missed it, Tim Nolan, but uh didn't we also have reserved funds? Um, besides Eschweiler and if we still do, how much is in there?
Uh, yes, and thank you, Jane, uh Jane, for uh mentioning those. So yes, different from the Eschweiler New Century. We have a reserve fund that is set aside and that is more. I don't want to say only for capital expenditures, but it does tend to be the largest use of it. So for instance, the boiler is an example that Nick had mentioned that would fit into those category of things. Uh, I actually do not have that number directly in front of me, but I want to say it's around a hundred and eleven, if I remember from uh this past meeting. Uh, that the balance is around. Uh, that fund has been used to pay off the roof. That we've uh recently uh redone. Uh, it is also the area that we use to currently, the boiler is on a loan or a line of credit. That we're using from there, so hoping to not deplete our res- our reserves, but utilize the opportunity for investment. In order to stretch out both principal and interest balances to go along with that. I mentioned this last week at masses uh that uh we met with our advisor. Uh, this past, well, this month, so January, a couple of weeks ago. And uh, the good news is we outperformed the market. The bad news, now, we didn't lose as much money as everyone else on their investments to go with that. But the reserves and the Eschweiler fit into those categories. So our conservative approach and uh. Catholic values that we use for investments have allowed us to maintain a reasonable level of. Uh, income that we utilize as well as the expenditures that come out of those funds. So anyway, I don't have the exact number for you, but if I recall, that's a net area to go along with that.
That's good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks, Jane Claire. Great question. Again, when I was new, I even still now I struggle with all of the financials, but it's of course important. Other questions? Just scrolling through the list of folks here. Don't be shy. You can type them in the chat. Mary Ann? I see, I see a visual hand raised.
It is my hand. And um I just want to affirm and applaud the um. Extended use of technology in our liturgy. I like the fact that the songs are being posted. Many songs are being posted on the screen. And that we've eliminated the um seasonal worship booklets. That's got to be good for the ecology. Um, so, you know, keep that going and and I think just to have those words visible up on the screen. I think is really good. And of course, uh, I know parishioners who can't make liturgy. You know, they really appreciate having it livestreamed to them. So just wanted to give a shout out and um and applause for the use of technology and liturgy.
Nick, I'd like to expand on that just a little bit. Thank you very much, Mary Ann. That that is really a very important thing for everybody to realize. Uh, I want to shout out to Andy Kukek, our new director of Liturgy and Music, who is bringing a whole new style. Uh, he's done some jazz pieces. He's the one really who got the words on screen going with Brian's help to actually make it happen. Uh, and to Judy Zunk, who is now on our staff as his coordinator for Liturgy. And the end result is I, sitting in the deacon's chair as I have now since two thousand and five. And the parish director chair since two thousand and twelve. This last year, there is a significant, I, if I so look out into the community. More families, more people at mass, more children. There's, there's a, there's a vibrancy that's visceral in the worship space. And I don't think it's any one thing. It certainly has to do with our parishioners actively participating. So Mary Ann, I think you, you stated correctly. Uh, and we, we ain't done yet, using my best Brooklynese. Uh, we've got a lot more in mind this year to continue with pastoral council's goal to, to have more vibrant liturgy. There's a lot more in the think tank right now about things you're going to see coming up during Lent, during Easter, during summer, ordinary time. And then as we go next year into the Advent season again. So there's more coming, uh as much as has already happened. Andy Kukek and Judy Song, thank you. And Tim Ellinger, by the way. Who is retired now as a tenured professor at UWM Milwaukee. And I don't know if you've noticed it, but Tim is more present and he wants to increase his presence. So we see Tim more than we really ever have on Sundays. Not every Sunday, but he's, he's much more engaged. And I know many people want him to be more engaged. So I'll stop. Back to you, Nick.
Yeah, no, but great, you know, very interesting on the live streaming and folks being able to participate remotely. I don't know that I would have thought that was an advantage, but that, that's awesome to hear, too. Tim, there was a question in the chat for you about um the percentage of parishioners that brought pledge cards up. I know that's a little bit of a, a question regarding, you know, percentages require, you know, how many parishioners we have, but. Wanted to kick that over to you. And then there was a follow-up, you know, will there be a follow-up uh request for folks to. Return those maybe in addition to the actual comments you made tonight.
Yeah, no, thank you. And a great question, uh Barb and Steve. Thank you. Uh, so, uh, yes, our, uh, we're excited to find out at our uh meeting, I think that's two weeks ago now. Uh, we had about a thirty one percent response of pledge cards. Now, while thirty one percent, obviously below half. Um, we've, we've learned that anything above about twenty two percent is above norm in the archdiocese. So uh, Good Shepherd as a whole has always, we've learned, been a little bit ahead of the curve. As far as responsiveness to these things. And so, uh, we are so grateful uh to those of you that have returned your pledge cards. Obviously, that leaves, you know, almost seventy percent of you though, that that have not responded to that pledge. And that's hence the encouragement to, hey, continue, we could use that. Uh, that by no means means that only thirty one percent. That by no means means that only 31% respond financially to the parish. That's tracked differently. So we have our pledge letters that go out each month. And if you return a pledge under your name, it still gets recorded and recognized to go along with that. If Marge is on, she might have that number as far as what the response rate for contributions are. That is different than the pledges and obviously higher to go along with it. But the response is good in relationship, or actually I'll say great, in relationship to what we see of our neighboring parishes to go along with that. That being said, yes, of course, we'd love to see that rate go up and see more numbers. Yes, we do expect that we will send out some additional requests for those that have not had the opportunity to respond yet, to encourage that so that we have that to go along with it. Marge being new, we're bringing into the fold and working together as a team to make sure that we've got that opportunity to do so. So yet this month, or realistically next month, we will probably see a follow up to those cards to say, hey, thank you for the opportunity. We'd love to know what your plans might be for the current year.
Tim, thank you for that. We are definitely going to do that second appeal. We always do. Typically, there's a 2, 3, 4% increase of the appeal. And if you're worried about 31% or maybe with the second appeal, 34%. Last year, we submitted a deficit budget and right now we're on budget. There's a lot of reasons for that. But the end result is we have a large number of parishioners who contribute that don't pledge. So that's wonderful news, but the challenge, if you're, think about that. If you're doing a budget or an organization and you don't have the body of the organization indicate what their projected pledging is going to be, it makes it very difficult to budget. So just encourage people you know to get those pledge cards in. There's no deadline, really. So it really helps us. And now we're entering into the 2023, 2024 budget. We see you, Jane Claire. So, so just be aware that there'll be a second appeal and we get, we expect that again, a large number of parishioners who contribute who don't necessarily pledge.
And I wanna mention something that came up in our other town hall. If you're seeing a discrepancy between the amount you pledged and the amount that is actually being withdrawn, please contact Marge and just call the parish. We, she's around and happy to help with that. We have seen a couple of instances where folks increased their pledge amount and that amount was not being drawn out. And so they were actually hoping to give more and they had upped their pledge, but that wasn't being drawn. So just, just a quick note on that topic before we pivot to, back to, I'm scrolling Jane Claire, cause you asked a question already. So I'm just making sure nobody's jumping you in line. No, they have not. Thank you. Jane Claire.
Well, first I'd like to say to Tim, you know, it's entirely possible that, you know, it just went right, right by me. But when you talk about, you know, getting the budget ready and the stewardship season and everything, what you said tonight, you know, so we can plan the budget, you know, is, is, makes a lot of sense. I mean, I'm sure it does to you, but I, I'm not sure it does to everybody else. So how much money will we have that we can use? And I know that, you know, some people do and some people don't make pledges, but that made a special sense to me today. But I have a question about the Eschweiler Fund. Going back historically a few years or, or whatever, people used to come and request money from the Eschweiler Fund. We had a form for it and sometimes we traditionally have paid tuition where people going through the seminary, you know, we've got maybe a couple dozen people graduated from the seminary certificate program and then maybe classes. Now, now the program, the lay ministry program is at stretch and stuff like that. So is it possible for individuals and/or a group in the parish to request extra money from Eschweiler Fund?
Yeah, it is. And actually, if I back up one step because you brought up some good points there. The first on the budgeting side of things. So Good Shepherd budgeted budgets on a July 1st through June 30th fiscal year, not on a calendar year budget. So that's a good point to make out that, yeah, here we're already almost at the end of January. I'm talking about planning on budgeting for the future. And the answer is because we start budgeting in February to plan for our July 1st beginning of the year. So, so we're in our final five months of our current budget year. So that's why I make those references. So that maybe, may have been confusing to people who did not know or do not recognize those pieces. But yes, Eschweiler Fund, so it has a number of different purposes. As far as why Eschweiler was created, the short answer, to keep it simple, is to provide for the future of Good Shepherd Parish. But there's a couple of different ways that the fund has the ability to do so. So number one, there is a preset calculation and it's based on past quarters of performance and growth and principle as to the ability to draw from it to help balance the budget, which we have done for the last couple of years. That was my reference in my report was we'd like to get away from borrowing from the Eschweiler New Century Fund. In order to help balance our budget, we'd like to see the opportunity for both pledges and other income opportunities to balance our budget without borrowing from our savings. Or in this case, I kinda look at it as retirement. And for many of us, we understand that, hey, retirement is there for the long-term future and not for the short-term future. So the more we take out today, the less opportunity there is for tomorrow. So, but yes, there's a provision for a small amount to be taken out. The last couple of years, it's been in the $66,000 range. I mentioned earlier, it was about 611 as far as the balance. So while it's not quite 10%, it's that kind of area that we can use if needed to help balance our budget to go with that. But above and beyond that, there's a number of ways that the funds can be drawn. And the, the one point that Jane Claire had pointed out is, so I'll call it tuition reimbursement. So whether this be professional growth as an adult, it can also be educational growth as a youth for Catholic education or a variety of other things like that. There are some provisions set out, the opportunities are available for those things out of the Eschweiler New Century Fund. And unfortunately not having the details directly in front of me, I can't quote them for site and, and details. But yes, the, the opportunity is there. So in the, we currently, actually at the last meeting, had an opportunity, someone is advancing their adult formation for formation in Good Shepherd's Parish. And a request was made, in this case, I think it was $500 towards their whatever bill that they're approaching for their advancement. And so that is an opportunity, yes, that some of those funds are available for education moving forward for professional development and educational development.
That's good because besides social justice, which is, you know, very, very prominent in our history and our present and our future, adult formation has been too, which has really buoyed up this parish over the years. And a lot of parishes, I'm gonna say can't afford it or don't afford it. You know, the first thing that goes is adult faith formation, but I think Good Shepherd has been dedicated to that from the beginning. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I think Nick had the opportunity to present, but, but yes, correct. But our adult formation as, is as important as our youth formation at Good Shepherd and we all have the opportunity to benefit from that.
So I don't know if you saw Nick's post in chat, but I, as Parish Director, not wanting to build us up falsely, these questions have been really good. They were on Sunday as well. Very intelligent, really thought provoking. I hope you've gotten the answers that you were hoping to get. If you didn't, please come back and let us know. But before we close out tonight, I would love to hear what you think is going well, that you think we could continue. Jane Claire mentioned some. Our commitment to human concerns and social justice is core. Our commitment to continuing formation is core. So things like that that have come up. Anything else that somebody, that comes to mind, don't, if you have to think about it a long time, that's not what I'm talking about. Any other affirmations that, that you have seen and experienced that you would like leadership, staff, councils to know about?
Oh, Mary Ann, let's go to you. Thank you.
Here, I, I'm beginning to see more diversity in our parish and I'm very excited about that. So I hope that continues. I know we're welcoming and now that we have a response, you know, and a relationship with St. Mark or Deportors, I hope that that diversity will continue. I think that's a good thing for a parish, but it's also good for Menominee Falls.
Great, thank you. Yeah, that, it is, it is great on a number of fronts. I think it's that one relationship, but others as well, all, all paying dividends. That doesn't just happen, of course. So many thanks. Tim, we can go to you. I'm not seeing a ton of, I'm scanning for hands. Just double checking. Tim, you wanna go to GOF?
I'd love to. If you allow me to take my finance hat off for a moment and put my parishioner hat on as a, a member of the parish and a participant in the parish. I, I, I love what I see happening, happening with generations of faith. So number one, I might be fall into that category of people required to attend. I have a daughter that's in confirmation. I have a younger daughter who is currently eighth grade, so still in the formation process to go along with it. But I, I love the opportunity to show up and sit at tables with those of you that do not have children in the parish and to be a part of generations of faith as an adult and to recognize and understand the value of community, but also to, to promote the value of the formation that's happening and, and the coordination that Margarita has added with the, I call it adult formation, that might not be the right term. But the, the in the spotlight, an adult formation blended with the child and youth formation side of things that's happening at Good Shepherd. It, it makes the family piece of this really come together. And, you know, just recently, we, we literally had our in the spotlight blended with generations of faith. And it gave the opportunity to put the two programs that have been in place together for many years into the same place. And so anyway, to me, I don't know what to say other than kudos. But I really love the opportunity through generations of faith to bring the adult formation, the child, the youth formation together, all in one place. And to bring the community together with the opportunity to, to grow and beyond. So I, I think most of the kudos go to Karina and to Margarite for combining together. I know that there's multiple people involved on their team and probably past team that, that get part of that recognition. But I just wanted to say that's something I've had the opportunity to experience, so.
I have a quick add-on to what Tim has said, if you don't mind. I've heard that we have some St. James families joining our GOF. Is that correct? You know, those of us that have been here for a while know how hard we worked on collaborating with first five parishes and then three and then two and whatever. But to have, you know, people, the families coming over from St. James, help St. James and it also helps us be, you know, it's, it's not the same kind of diversity perhaps that Mary Ann was talking about, but it, it spreads our wings a little bit and it helps people see how good things are happening at Good Shepherd. So kudos to whoever brought that about.
Yeah, we do have some families joining us from St. James. Their, their family program wasn't, wasn't getting as many parishioners as they wanted to. So they have told any of their parishioners who want to join a family type generational program to come over to us. So we've been happy to add them to the mix. And Sue Divine Simon has been added to the mix of helping plan and occasionally coming. So it's been, yeah, it's been great.
And let me just add that, of course, as we for many years will be having confirmation with St. James, our youth, Matthew 25, and our National Catholic Youth Conference and our, our, our national work camp we do with St. James. I've had a lot of conversation with Father John Hemzing, the new pastor at St. James. He's very much in for collaboration. He did ask to be allowed to get his, you know, his dip his toe in the water and get to know the community. He's, every time I see him, he says to me, I don't know how you did it. We got so many funerals over here. But he's, he's very much, he's an ecumenical person. He's a justice person and he's into collaboration. And off, well, I can't say off the record, this is being recorded. I've asked him to join me to help get Monsignor Scheckley and Father Andrew Lim on board. But collaborating again is for parishes. So for things like missions and things like communal anointings and things like reconciliation as communities. So I, I'm, I'm thinking this year may be a re-ignition of broader collaboration, not just Good Shepherd and St. James, but other parishes as well. So say a prayer. I think Father John will be a good ally in that stead.
Deacon Sandy, I, I think I'm, there's some other comments in the chat and I'm grateful, Brian and Tim, thank you for those as well. Maybe it feels like the right spot to maybe close our town hall here. Before we do, just a quick encouragement that while we host this town hall, we're in church weekly. So i- if you bump into one of us and you have a question, we of course would welcome those questions afterwards. It's not that this is the one and only time during the year to ask questions. So bring those up informally to us. If you know someone personally, that's great. You can always ask me or others on this call. So we would welcome any feedback, affirmations, questions in the weeks and months to come, of course. So Deacon Sandy, do you maybe wanna close us out in prayer? And we can, we can close tonight.
Always happy to pray. So again, we begin in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. As I did on Sunday, I'm gonna refer back to this past weekend's third Sunday in ordinary time, second reading from the first letter of Paul to the Corinthians. I personally love, absolutely love, one of my favorite passages, the very beginning of what Paul told his constituents 2,000 years ago, but is speaking to us today from the scripture as well. And here's what Paul has to say to Good Shepherd's community, leadership, and parishioners in 2023. I urge you, brothers and sisters, in the name of Christ, that all of you agree in what you say and that there be no divisions among you, but that you be united in the same mind and in the same purpose. So dear God, you know better than we do the division that's in our world, in our country, in our state, in our community, sometimes in our families, certainly in the Catholic Church and other denominations and other faith traditions. I ask God that you inspire this gathering here tonight and the leadership of Good Shepherd and the parishioners to be of one mind in this regard. We're not all gonna agree on everything. That's, that's never gonna happen and that's unrealistic. But that through proper discernment and formation of goals and agendas, that even if it wasn't our idea, that if the consensus of leadership wants to go in a given direction like mass vibrancy and encouraging more families and youth to be involved, we all get on board with the ability to continue to dialogue around it and tweak it and adjust it. So God, I ask that we consider again, one more time, what St. Paul says to us. He doesn't ask us, he urges us. I urge you, brothers and sisters, in the name of Christ. So in other words, and forgive, forgive my Brooklyn Eats here, for Christ's sake, for Christ's sake, all of you should agree on what you say and that there be no divisions among you, that that you be united in the same mind and the same purpose. And all of this, God, through your Son, Christ our Lord. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you. Bye, everyone. Have a great night.
Bye. Good to see you all.